Please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call and roll.
Councilmember Daye.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder. Mister presiding officer, we have a quorum.
Very well, is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to communications.
Mister presiding officer, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, fourth district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number three, sixth district.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number four, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number, oh, we'll move to road and bridge matters. Item number one, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
We'll move to other communications, item number one, all districts.
Receive and file, same motion for item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the county, and the issuance of the request for proposal be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number eight, second district.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as requested.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number nine, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number ten, fifth district.
Receive, file, and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, the Department of Planning, and the county councilor.
So ordered.
Item number eleven, seventh district.
Right. Receive and file, the communication, please. And that'll be the order.
Item number twelve, second, fifth, and sixth districts.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number thirteen.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number fourteen.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number fifteen.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number sixteen.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number seventeen.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eighteen.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number nineteen.
Receive?
Oh.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'd like to see this referred to committee.
Um, very well, you wanna receive and file it as well?
Sure.
Okay, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty.
Please drop from the order of business. And that'll be the order.
Thank you. Item number twenty-one.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-two, third district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number twenty-three, sixth district.
Receive and file, same motion for item number twenty-four, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-five, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
We have no add-ons this evening.
Very well, report to the county executive.
Thank you, Ernie, and good evening, everyone. Yesterday, civic progress devoted its September meeting to a discussion of reducing crime and violence in Saint Louis. I was on a panel with the US Attorney, the Attorney General, our police chief, and the Mayor of City Saint Louis, and Saint Louis Police Chief. Also on the panel was Michael McMillan from Urban League and James Clark from Better Family Life. No matter where you live or work, the crime in the Saint Louis region affects us all. I'm glad to see that civic progress is a part of this conversation, and in fact, we're hoping to lead it. We know that a better education and job opportunities are a big part of this equation. The city and the county, we can't do it all on our own. You all have seen our budgets, and you know our challenges. We need our civic partners, we need our nonprofits, we need everyone in the community engaged. We need more investment in workforce development, we need more job opportunities, we need more youth programs, so our young people can see that there is a promising future ahead of them. Violent crime has been the headline for our region. This summer, too many of our families were torn apart by child murders, taken down by stray bullets. Last week, I convened the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for the first time in forty years. Our county crime commission consists of our county prosecutor, our police chief, head of justice services, our presiding judge, our council chair and county executive, and three citizens from the community. We all have agreed that working together is essential to success. Public safety and criminal justice reform can't be addressed in isolation, they come together, and we agree that we must keep our conversations going. This is a long game, and we have a shared mission to make the region as safe as possible. Never has there been a more important time in our history to redouble our efforts. We've been talking about criminal justice reform and public safety now since I took office five months ago, but really, this conversation's been going on for years. It was well underway even before our new prosecuting attorney took office, and now it's been greatly accelerated. As you know, Governor Parson was in town last week. He's offered twenty-five state employees to help contribute to our coordinated effort in the region on violent crime. Most of these are highway patrol officers. They're here to help with our county officers, our state and federal agencies, and our city officers, and our coordinated efforts against violent crime are not here to write tickets for minor violations. The governor also pledged two million dollars toward, um, to help crime victims in our region, and we appreciate those efforts as well. On a separate front, I'm working with Mayor Cruzen to provide more county police officers on Metro. I have formally proposed that the Saint Louis County Police Department take over public safety and policing on the MetroLink. That means taking command of the security officers as well as the police officers. With this proposal, which I hope to hammer out the details in the next few weeks, Saint Louis County can provide a total of sixty-two officers on the light rail system in addition to the eight police officers that's provided by Saint Louis City. The county could pay for the extra detail by withholding two point four million dollars from the routine funding for ByState. This agency has seen its ridership drop by seventy, by twenty-five percent over the past five years. Without a comprehensive public safety plan in place, I am afraid that the MetroLink is in danger of derailing. That would be devastating to our region, it can't happen, and it's a headline that we don't need. This really has been a cruel summer. Violence is tearing our communities apart. I can't think of any more important issue to bring us together than addressing violent crime, and collectively, together, we have the ability to change this narrative. Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you, Sam. Report to special committees, Ethics Committee, please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. This brings us to public forum.
This evening, we have fifteen speakers.
Very well. When you're called, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. For those of you who may not know, each speaker is provided three minutes to address the council. We'd ask that you, as much as possible, adhere to that three-minute limitation. You'd be giving, given a little bit, but as much as possible, we want to keep it to three minutes. So with that, please call the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Donna Slummer.
Good evening, members of the council. You know, I don't like to get up and speak, I'm nervous, I try to come and do off the cuff. My name, I'm sorry, Donna Slummer, I live in Overly, Missouri. But I start to shake, and I'm not a good public speaker, but you know why I'm here? I'm the Saint Louis County Animal Care and Control. It's been one month since Acting Director Spring Schmidt stood here and gave you an update on the audit, and I don't know anything that's happened in the past month. There very well could be some changes that have been made. I can tell you that over eighty dogs have been euthanized. Uh, we're not talking about your vicious, biting, cruel dogs. We are talking about dogs who, on their behavior list, are listed as shy. They have been killed for being shy, and we just come before you because we don't know if anyone cares or not, but we can tell you that we care about these animals, and that, and we just ask that maybe another update from Spring Schmidt is due so that we can see if anything has been, um, or any changes have been taken place. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Slummer.
Next speaker is Tashonda Trup.
Good evening, council. My name is Tashonda Trup, and I live in Pine Line. I won't stand before you tonight with a long three-minute speech because each and every one of you know my story and know where I stand on the jail deaths and the changes that still need to be made at the Justice Center. I stand before you tonight with a challenge. I keep hearing the words of our county executives saying Saint Louis County can do better. How do you expect to do better if you are not fully aware of the disarray the Justice Center is in? You have employees willing to tell you exactly what's going on across the street, but no one will offer them any protection. Why is that? Is it because no one wants them to tell the truth about what really happens to our loved ones in the Justice Center? Doing better will start with accountability and transparency. If you want to know what's going on in that jail, I challenge you to offer those employees willing to help some protection. I've talked to several, so I know they exist. This has been going on for too long not to have any answers. It has been two hundred and eight days since I lost my son, and I've been asking this council for something. Now, I'm challenging you to do better.
Thank you, Ms. Trup.
Next speaker, Natasha Trup.
Hello, good evening, council. My name is Natasha Trup, and I live in Hazelwood. And as I stand before you, like she said before, you know the story regarding my nephew. So what I'm asking, I hear the audit went on for the animal shelter, but we yet to get the audit on the jail. You promised us one, but we don't have it. And it's like we're getting pushed around with stories and smoke and mirrors, but not no truths. You have whistleblowers willing to tell the truth, but nobody's willing to hear the truth. So we needing answers. And as I stand before you and I look at this board, then it's such a disarray going on before the board. We have people in the papers with different things going on in their lives, and different accusations from the Stinger administration. So do we not think that maybe the board just needs to be all changed? And I have a challenge for the people behind me. Every one of these seats are getting ready to come up. I challenge the people that's out there. If we want to see better and do better, we need to put better people in the seats, and maybe we'll get some answers to some of these questions. Because, see, we're still got the Stinger administration hanging over us, and all of us ain't exempt from it. So I think some of these districts need to relook at themselves and stop looking at just themselves and the people, because we, the people, deserve better, way better. Thank you all, have a good day.
Thanks.
Next speaker, Garrett Mees.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to address the county council, the masses of businesses out there that now, due to the incompetence of the county council to enforce one ordinance, they've now nullified their ability to enforce any ordinance. And if they try, then you'll be able to sue them for trying to do so. As long as a business does not follow the permit process, file for them, they can build any type of business, anywhere, at any time, and the county cannot shut you down since they've allowed Simple Pleasures to do so. Members of this council are trying to use the grandfather clause not to do their job, even though the business was already in violation of county ordinance at the time of their getting their permits, after they were turned down for not filing them in the first place. Grandfathering comes into play only if a new ordinance is enacted after the business is already established. This is not the case with Simple Pleasures, so enforcement would not be considered retroactive, as my councilman, Ernie Tracus, has alluded to. J.D. Evans now has acknowledged that in an email, and the council's office is now complicit with this violation of ethics and law, and is attempting to change the rules after I approve to the county that has failed to do their job under the original ordinance. The Director of Public Health Department, Spring Schmidt, informed Simple Pleasures that they are not allowed to sell tobacco products out of their business due to the active ordinance at the time in violation of seven one six two two five. The attorney that wrote the original ordinance, Mike Schuman, agrees. Because of this, one thousand three dot one six seven also applies as adult novelties become one hundred percent of their sellable inventory. Yet the county council, through the councilor's office, has chosen to direct law enforcement not to enforce the ordinance, allowing them to continue to operate, thus nullifying the county's ability to enforce any ordinance, past, present, or future, unless they enforce these ones now. One of several bogus justifications that they've heard, that I've heard used, is the decision that they've used a different method of measurement that is one used by public department to determine compliance, from the door of the business to the sidewalk, along the sidewalk to the other building or property in question, whether it be a school, church, daycare, house, or county park, even though in a court of law, any reasonable person would know and say that the distance between two points is a straight line. Despite the fact that the public health department uses this straight-line method to determine compliance, and has been the method of compliance for years, and it's the same department that informed the business that they are not allowed to sell tobacco products. I'm really glad we have some whistleblower protection in the county now. My councilman, Ernie Tracus, told me two weeks ago after this meeting that he's washed his hands of this, cares not of the rule of law. I hope that this remaining of six of you will have the fortitude that my councilman seems to be lacking and right this ship. Your failure to act is not only a dereliction of duty, but it violates your oath of office under Article Two, Part Two, Section Five. As the ramifications of not acting on this will have a devastating effect across the county, allowing strip clubs, smoke shops, and other businesses that were historically legally denied, and allowing a variety of illegal form businesses while denying the legal form businesses. I'm pretty sure this is not what is expected of our elected officials. Unfortunately, it is what we've become to know of you. We've already been stung by Stinger, now we're getting taken by Tracus and patronized by Page.
Next speaker, Dave Goken.
Good evening. My name is Dave Goken, I live in Edwardsville, Illinois. I'm a Saint Louis County retiree following twenty-six years of public service with the Saint Louis County Family Court. Recently, I've been challenging the investment practices of the Saint Louis County Retirement Fund. The outside auditor says the plan is funded at sixty-one percent, which places it in the bottom twenty-five percent of all public plans in the state of Missouri. As you probably know, Saint Louis County retirees have not had a cost of living adjustment for fourteen years, which for those of us who have been retired that long, has reduced our spending power by twenty-eight percent. I realize funds are tight for the county, so I decided to look closely at the county's retirement plan to see if money could be saved by moving away from active managed investments and toward passive investments or indexing. I also expected to improve the performance with a passive portfolio. I formulated such a portfolio of Vanguard indexes which precisely mirrored the asset allocations of the county's current plan. Over the last decade, Vanguard outperformed the Saint Louis County Plan by sixty-nine million dollars, and Vanguard's annual fees for two thousand eighteen were nine hundred and sixty thousand, whereas the county's annual fees were three million. So two million in excess fees, sixty-nine million dollars in arrears of what the Vanguard. I took this analysis to the retirement board, and it was submitted to the board and the board's consultant for critique. This was not my choice, since I thought the consultant had a conflict because he was, he helps choose the active management vendors that we currently have. The two primary criticisms centered around my methodology and what they said was vastly different asset allocations. I made the small corrections necessary and resubmitted it, but they refused to discuss it any further. I am hoping the council will give me an opportunity to present this analysis, and I am more than happy to let the data undergo independent professional review. The board chair let me know in no uncertain terms I was not an investment professional, and should I stay, and I should stay in my own lane? I confess, I am not an investment professional. I haven't even played one on TV, but I am an educated individual with a master's degree who has read, researched, and studied investing on my own. I doubt that anyone has tried to limit Mister Page's ability to perform his duties, administrative duties, because he was trained as a pediatric anesthesiologist, and thank you, sir, for that, my wife worked at Cardinal Glennon for thirty-five years. So, skills are transferable, is my point. I read Mister Page's first one-hundred-days article, and one of the things which caught my attention was his piece about transparency. This seems particularly important in the light of the Stinger scandal. I made this point to the retirement board regarding not publicizing investment costs and fees like they do investment gains and losses, and it fell on deaf ears. I contacted Councilman Fitch yesterday because I saw on tonight's agenda an item about expired terms on boards and commissions needing to be addressed. I think this is a healthy thing in general. For instance, the Chair of the Retirement Board's term expired in February of two thousand and fourteen. With the county being stretched financially, I'm wondering why no one seems particularly interested in the potential availability of millions of dollars to benefit retirees and potentially other needs of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Goken.
Next speaker, Becky Hirschbach.
Good evening. My name is Becky Hirschbach, and I reside in Saint Charles, Missouri. I am the Executive Director with the Productive Living Board for Saint Louis County Citizens with Developmental Disabilities, otherwise known as PLB. I would like to offer information for the county council's consideration as it decides ByState's annual appropriation specifically funding from the Transportation Trust Fund. Earlier today, you were sent a letter outlining concerns PLB has regarding a memorandum in today's agenda materials that asks for legislation that appropriates ByState's budget in two six-month installments. This includes the Transportation Trust Fund. While this may appear to be prudent legislation on behalf of taxpayers, I want to ensure the council is aware that decisions regarding this particular fund significantly impact individuals with developmental disabilities. Per Missouri Revised Statute ninety-four six four five, PLB receives two percent of Saint Louis's, of Saint Louis County's appropriation to ByState from the Transportation Trust Fund, specifically for the provision of transportation to and from work for people with developmental disabilities. Therefore, when ByState's appropriation is reduced or altered in any way, PLB's funding is likewise altered. PLB combines Transportation Trust Funds and PLB Funds to ensure safe and reliable transportation for approximately two hundred people throughout the county who rely on this service to remain employed. Historically, between seven hundred thousand and nine hundred and sixty thousand is received via this Transportation Trust Fund, a significant amount of money, and PLB supplements that with an additional three hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand. This has worked without any issues until fiscal year two thousand seventeen, when ByState's appropriation was reduced significantly, and only one hundred and seventy thousand dollars in funding was received by the Productive Living Board. It has been stable since that time. So as to not suspend services in fiscal year seventeen, the remaining one point four million dollars required was taken from the PLB reserves. A recurrence of this situation will definitely negatively impact people who rely on this service. Transportation is a significant challenge for people with developmental disabilities. They almost always rely on others, and that comes with a significant cost, which is why we wanted to share this information with you today. So we thank you for your work to ensure we have safe public transportation options for our community and for the spirit in which we believe this memorandum was issued. We also thank the council for considering the information provided today that identifies potential unintended consequences for people with developmental disabilities. We are happy to provide further information if requested, and thank you again for the opportunity to share this information.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Reverend Phil Duvall.
Evening, council.
Good evening, Reverend.
I want to first mention that this Friday, the Third Justice Services Advisory Board will be meeting this Friday at nine AM, and we do hear the voices of Tashonda Trup and her family, as well as the other inmates that lost their lives. Two weeks ago, in this very chamber, I was able to attend the police, Saint Louis County Police Commissioners' meeting, and I was shocked and disturbed by the leadership of Mister Corbington, the Chair of the Commissioner. Now, with all due respect, Mister Tracus, one thing I appreciate is you allow us to do our three minutes and then allow us to wrap it up. There was a young lady who came in here who had reported a rape, a sexual assault, and she was just trying to get it reported correctly. County police were called, it actually happened with a Brentwood police officer. Now, I'm understanding that these are allegations, but I have daughters, I have sisters, I have a mother, and I have friends that are female. Never I had to witness a governmental body of a police commissioner silence the woman and tell her, "Your minutes are up, or I'll have you removed from this chamber," as she was crying out of a rape, of a rape, of a sexual assault. It's a leadership issue. Now, I heard something interesting this week, and I think about my friend, the former chief. He and I disagreed, we could agree to disagree, but he stood tough, and he at least had some mandate when he would say, "If you lie, you die." He's talking about his officers. Accountability. Now, I cannot sit here, after we were here last year, telling you the story of Nikki Brown, qualified black female officer, working in where you begin your career, the police academy. Those of you might have just seen an article, recent article, of an instructor over there who had some type of affair, something inappropriate, and he's fighting over some ninety-day suspension, which I'm told that's not even correct. But he still has his job. The recruit that he allegedly had the sexual affair with, she's gone. Nikki Brown reports the issues, she's gone. Now, we're telling me citizens come in before the police commissioners and say they've been sexually assaulted, and it's dismissive. Something's gonna have to change, and it's gonna have to change real quick, because if it is not, he asking you for a hearing. I'll bring you the evidence. Whistleblower protection, I've got mine.
Thank you, Reverend Duvall.
Next speaker, Reverend Darrell Gray.
Good evening, Reverend Gray.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just said to Reverend Duvall, I have to speak behind you. I'm Reverend Darrell Gray, I'm the Associate Pastor of the Greater Fairfax Missionary Baptist Church, and I have the honor and pleasure of serving as the political advisor for the Metropolitan Clergy Coalition. Metropolitan Clergy Coalition. I live at forty-three fifty-eight Enright Avenue. I would first like to commend, and I know you don't get a lot of commendations, I'd like to commend the county executive, Dr. Page, and the council on the reactivation of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council as a means of effectively being proactive in addressing crime in the county. It was an, it was an important decision. Understandably, it was a decision that, I, I, maybe it took twenty-two children to be killed. It's unfortunate if it takes twenty-two children to be killed in our region, we take action, that's unfortunate. But at least this happened. And I would hope that the coordinating council will focus not simply on enforcement, not simply on intervention, but it would also focus on prevention. We've heard a lot of talk from the governor and other law enforcement agencies and officials about what they're going to do to help curb the crime in the region. And they talk about shot spotters, they talk about high-dense cameras, they talk about highway patrol. Mr. Chairman, they talk about all of these law enforcement techniques, and that's fine. Bring highway patrol in, hopefully not to over-police an already over-policed community. Hopefully, that's not going to be the case. But to open, open it up and make it, make it possible for the city and the county to do what they need to do to solve crimes. To date, in the city, a hundred-and-six murders have yet to be solved. A hundred-and-six out of a hundred-and-thirty-seven, forty-seven. A hundred-and-six have yet to be solved. I don't know what the, the ratio is in the county, but I hope it's not as bad. And I, I know that the, the county executive has been meeting, he's been meeting with the community. We applaud you for that, keep doing that, but please don't continue to meet with the same people, the usual suspects we call them. And you've named some names tonight, and they do great work, but there are a lot of other organizations out there who do great work also. And they're not being asked to give their input, nor are they given the resources to, to be more effective than the names that you've named. Please be mindful of that. You can't keep giving millions of dollars to organizations, but we keep getting the same results. And so we're asking you to look beyond the usual suspects, the organizations that have been there traditionally and historically doing good work, but we can do better if we, if we kind of add to that tent. And then finally, I was with Reverend Duval. I sat with him during the police commissioners' hearing, and I was also appalled. I was appalled by the demeanor in which the chair spoke to a woman who was crying out for help. It was appalling. Now, maybe the, and with all due respect, maybe the, the chair, he's been chair far too long, he's seen too many things. Maybe he's tired. Grandmother said, "When you're tired, you need to take a rest." It's time, Mr. Chair, it's time county executive, it's time for a change on that police commission. There needs to be people on that police commission that support your agenda, and I've been in the room with you, that have your temperament. People need to know that the police commission supports the police, supervises the police, but there's a balance between being too pro-police and seemingly being anti-public.
Reverend Gray, if you don't mind, I need you to wrap up.
It's time. I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Ed Golderman.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Ed Golderman. I live in Kirkwood, five-four-two Waddell Court. I have watched civic regress take the city of St. Louis down over the last forty years to the very bottom. And I see a tsunami of their work pouring the debt of the city onto the county quicker than we all anticipate. There was a meeting downtown today that if you had had a representative on the tourism commission, you could have advanced very markedly some improvements in our, in our downtown in terms of being a viable, desired, requested destination. I'm very, very concerned that all of the players are now in place. The mayor has got her team, the executive's gonna have his. There are more post dispatch reporters working for county government and city-county than work at the post. This is all coming at us very quickly. I'd ask you to do two things. End the five zoo-museum district taxes right now to give us, give us some buffer against what's coming. And the good people of rail, their consultant almost told you, almost told you the other night, to send them to the five empires that make all the money through the, through bringing the lower-income and moderate-salary workers to their places that make their profits. They are the Cardinals and Cordish, that empire. They are the Blues, Civic Progress Enterprise, that's their empire. Thirty million from one, thirty million from the other. Go out to the hospital complexes, this side, the other side of the park, thirty million from them, that's pocket change. Go to the other side of the park, to Washington University with their billion-dollar endowment, thirty million from them. Go out to UMSL, which is a tax-supported university which depends a lot on, on rail, and they have a, a private corporation on, on their property out there, you know? You might look into the tax breaks there, and that's thirty million. And leave St. Louis County taxpayers alone? Give, give us a breather, give us a chance to survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golderman.
Next speaker, Beth Wasserstrom.
My name is Beth Wasserstrom, and I live at ninety-five-hundred Crockett Drive in Olivet. And I want to thank all of you for listening to our concerns. A couple of weeks ago, I was here announcing that both vets had resigned at the animal shelter, and we would soon be in crisis if we failed to act. In those couple of weeks, we have now set a two-year record for the most animals euthanized in a single month. Our dogs have almost doubled, and we euthanized eighty total animals just in a few weeks. You are probably told we often euthanize for aggression, and of those eighty, eighty animals, just three were euthanized for aggression. If you were sent the stats from Thursday night's board meeting by your upset constituents, you will notice that thirty dogs were simply euthanized for behavior. We have sunshined enough animals to know that this is where we lump our animals who are euthanized for space. We've had reports to the press that we do not euthanize for space. Because what, because what behavior, if not aggression, justifies an animal should die? The other night, my rescue dogs casually strolled by the dinner table with a rotisserie chicken liberated from my countertop. My dogs jump all over me with excitement when I come home from a trip. These are bad behaviors. Should they be euthanized? No, and neither should our adoptable shelter animals. These animals should be safely in home if we're using good business practices. To put things into perspective, if you factor out the dogs that were released back to their owners, usually in their first couple of days, we just euthanized nearly one out of every three dogs that remained in the shelter and one out of every four cats. I imagine at least one of you has told the shelter was fine and that we had a plan. This is not fine, and eighty dead animals might suggest we need a better plan. I do not blame the operations manager for these numbers. He did not create the situation that caused both full-time vets to resign in a week, nor does he have the resources or authority to fix it. But somebody has an obligation in this equation to make it right. Common sense would tell you, if we are barely getting by with two full-time vets, how we are suddenly, how are we suddenly going to thrive with one part-time vet working only two days per week? The answer is not. So I'm here tonight to beg for help. If you need fifty more of us here begging for help next week, I'll bring them. We are desperate. As of last Thursday, we had eighty-one animals waiting for surgery. Today, it is probably closer to a hundred. Next week, it will be a hundred and twenty. Several of them last week were actually pre-adopted and just sitting there waiting and waiting to go home. Perhaps you aren't an animal lover, and this doesn't really concern you. That's okay, but we are hemorrhaging money carrying for a shelter packed with animals, and that should concern you. Even though this is the third time this has happened during my two-and-a-half years at the shelter, my understanding is we have no emergency plan, no spay-and-neuter mobile units are approved vendors such as Offspot or high-volume clinics that our, that our animals can be transported to, like Carol House Quick Fix. In the next forty-eight hours, the shelter absolutely cannot mobilize emergency funds with our two-point-six-billion-dollar budget or problem-solve the approved vendor requirements. But I ask you all to please allow volunteers and community members to once again step in and at least try to be successful where others have failed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wasserstrom.
Next speaker, Floyd Blackwell.
Floyd Blackwell, Alderman Cool Valley, one-four-five Signal Hill Drive, St. Louis. There's been a few things said about what's going on in St. Louis County. You know, first of all, some of the officers are not really doing their jobs. You go in to make a complaint, they won't take your complaint seriously. And you have a lady that comes up here to ask for some help, and you tell her to get out of here because her time is up. You know, we got people running up and down the streets of St. Louis County, running stop signs, running lights, and speeding, and reckless driving. It doesn't seem like nothing's being done about it. I have a little saying with Wesley Bell that says, "You're going to work and not to jail," says Floyd Blackwell with Wesley Bell. And the only way you can do that, you're gonna have to have jobs, you know? I've been working on this crime thing and this, this murder here in St. Louis, St. Louis region since, since 2014. And here are people come to you, you wonder why? It's because we care. We come because we care, we want to do something about it, okay? Generation after generation after generation, and nothing is being done. You sit back and you posture, and you look like, "Yeah, well, we'll do something. Yeah, well, we'll do something. We'll, we'll make a decision." But I'll tell you, if this was Ladue, or Creve Court, or Chesterfield, or, or, or Kirkwood, and they had ten kids being murdered, there'd be something done about it immediately. All right? And here I am, staring you in the face, staring you right in the face, willing to help, and you pass me over like you're nothing, you're nobody. Why do we come here? Because we give a damn. We care. We want to help. Like I said, I've been fighting this thing since 2014, all right? You got, you got young gang, gang-bangers, you got people who are getting young kids into gangs. You can't, you can't talk to them, they lost. You gotta go down to the, to the, to the grade schoolers now. You gotta get them, catch them, because someone thirteen, fourteen-years-old is not gonna listen to you. I've been working on this thing, I know what's going on. I have a desire to want to help, and here we are, generation after generation after generation, and not a damn thing's being done. We need help with economic development, we need help with education, we talked about mental illness, proper policeman, we don't need over-police, we don't come down here and throw a bunch of money at a problem or over-police an area. We need sincere help, a desire to want to really fix a problem. They say, "Well, you'll be all right." No, we're not gonna be all right. We're gonna have to make it all right. In order to make it all right, you gotta put people involved who's in the middle of this thing, who comes from the background that their problem is at. That's how we get the job done. All I want to do is get the job done. Help me. Give me a chance. Again, as I walk away, for a couple of years, I'm staring you right in the face.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, county executive Sam Page continually claims he supports transparency in his administration. He goes so far to say transparency will rebuild trust in county government all by itself. But he not only doesn't back up his words, he is doing the opposite. As I mentioned at last week's meeting, the county executive's office has refused to provide information having to do with his recent appointment to the MSD Board of Trustees. The personnel exemption for keeping records closed is not credible in this case. An MSD trustee is hardly an employee of St. Louis County. The letter of appointment of Amy Farr to the MSD Board shows the general incompetence of the, of the county executive's office. In addition to it being sent to the wrong person, numerous mistakes were made in the letter. Also, Mr. Page appointed Ms. Farr not only to fill an unexpired term, but also for a full term after that. I have never seen this before, in doubt of legality. The need for all the cover-ups is puzzling. The simplest requests for information are ignored or refused. The Director of Communications for the County Executive's Office, Doug Moore, refuses to provide information on anything, and there is now a new custodian of records for the county executive's office, the third one in less than five months. More than a month ago, I made a request to the Department of Administration as I thought they would have the information I wanted. The request was referred to Doug Moore. After he sat on it for thirty days, I reminded him of the request. He then passed it to Christina Phine, the new custodian of records. This was last Monday. On Friday of last week, I received an email from Christina saying she would not be the custodian of records any further. An additional email from her said, "I am no longer part of this administration. My request from over a month ago was still not fulfilled." If the county executive did not want to answer questions from citizens, he should not have taken the job. And if he wants to create a culture of transparency, as he claims, he has quite a ways to go. Thank you, Mr. Treigus.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Next speaker, Chris Davis.
My name is Chris Davis, Government Affairs Director of Site Improvement Association. On behalf of over a hundred contractors in the St. Louis metropolitan region, including those that primarily perform work on St. Louis County Highway Department projects, we humbly submit the following comments and recommendations to House Bill two-sixty-three in ordinance enacting a cone of silence. We commend county executive Page for taking an initiative to restore public trust in its government. We concur with this intent. However, we must ensure that bidders are able to fully understand the complex requirements and specifications of a project in order to safely and effectively perform the services for the benefit of the taxpayers. Simply stated, a quick phone call can clarify significant confusion. First, under the definition of designated point of contact, we may need to outline a secondary point of contact in a rare instance where a single point of contact may not be available or become non-responsive. Second, under the definition of vendor's representative, site requests clarifying a distinction between a consultant who acts at the behest of a single bidder and distinguish between an employee of a trade association who acts in the interest of multiple vendors collectively and has no vested interest in any particular bidder. Site has an interest in all vendors bidding on a level playing field. Third, the application of cone of silence, paragraph D significantly limits communication between a county taxpayer or vendor on a project and their own elected council member. You, ladies and gentlemen. This paragraph has the unintended consequence of a vendor constituent who feels they may have been wronged by future administration in contacting their elected representative unless that communication is documented, submitted publicly to the county clerk, and published as a component of the public council agenda. This provision has the unintended consequence of enabling fraud and pay-to-play. You recall, not too long ago, Gershenson's Construction was recommended by the Department for a project, approved by this body, and the contract was never executed. Significant contact was made by site and by Gershenson's attorneys at their behest to communicate with all of you so that that contract got executed. This paragraph would significantly limit that communication.
That's three minutes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Sure. Site specifically requests that communication- Site specifically requests that communication with department staff be allowed via phone call for questions and clarification purposes only, and a log of those phone calls be kept. Then, upon clarification of the issues, the information can be provided to all potential vendors, as is the current practice of the Highway Department. The ordinance as introduced fails to address allowable communications during an appeals process. The county's diversity ordinance requires the establishment of appeals process. It is critical to outline allowable communication during that time. Finally, the diversity program is barely one years old. There are ongoing significant conversations between site, site contractors, the Highway Department, and the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. Those conversations are candid, and they must continue so that that program can flourish. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Next speaker, Bonnie Boim.
Hi, my name's Bonnie Boim. I live at 1915 Mitchell Place. I'm here to talk about the crisis at the St. Louis County Animal Shelter. But first, I want to thank the three powerful men that came and spoke on behalf of the woman who was trying to report her assault. We really appreciate that. Thank you. So, the St. Louis County Animal Shelter is again and repeatedly in crisis. This time, because of lack of staff veterinarians, there are animals unaltered waiting to be spayed and neutered so that they can be adopted. And one of the things that the shelter has said that they plan to do is to adopt animals out unaltered. This is an absolute disaster in the making. It is the equivalent of, at the height of an epidemic, canceling a vaccination program because you're bogged down carrying with sick people. Spaying and neutering is our only answer. We have a pet overpopulation problem. We cannot shelter and adopt our way out of this problem. And no unaltered animal should ever be adopted from an animal shelter, period. I understand that the veterinary shortage is real. It presents a very difficult challenge. And instead of letting animals leave the shelter unaltered to exacerbate the pet overpopulation problem, the St. Louis County Animal Shelter needs to be reaching out to the community, to the nonprofits who are continually offering to help. We need to work together on this and come up with a real solution. We cannot make this problem worse by allowing unaltered animals to be adopted from the shelter. That should be off the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boim.
Final speaker, Kenneth. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Thank you.
First of all, let me say this. I know that you have Councilwoman Irvin resign to take a job to get an increase in salary. You had a state rep to resign from her office to take another job with the county to get an increase in salary. I understand that. I have no problem with that. My issue tonight is boards and commissions. My issue is, just because you appointed those two people, two African-American women, to those jobs, does not satisfy what we need in North County. My issue in North County is that Mr. Page told us that he was gonna do, take care of the boards and commissions, and it's not been taken care of. You know, we don't have anything. We don't have no representation on the boards and commission. But they're steady going up all of these little buildings for dialogues and different things, nothing that benefits the county, North County residents. The grocery stores that were closed, you can only, they can't have grocery store back there for five years because that's what you signed off on. You know, these type of things we had. We need representation in the African-American community in North County to be on these boards and commission. And we need to stop playing games and telling people... They told me that I didn't even... What? Did you file an application? I said, "Yes, I did." I took it up to his office, they stamped it, and there it is. They called me three times. Now, what's the purpose of a call? To say something that's going on? I haven't heard anything. But they steady appointing people, I mean, steady doing things with the boards and commission. Let me tell you what's going on. The Board of Freeholders needs some people on it in ten days. You're gonna appoint those people. But you done took five months. You've been in office five months, so I'll give you four months to get yourself together. And we haven't had anything. You met with the clergy coalition, which I'm a member of, and told them that they were gonna do something with the boards and commission. Nothing has happened. Nothing. The other thing is that we need our representation, African-American representation. And I'm not talking about those little small boards. I'm talking about economic development. I'm talking about real boards that benefit North County. You're talking about the crime and everything that's going on in North County. We know what our people need, like you know in South County and everywhere else, what your people need and what kind of job. We need some help. We need some people appointed. If you're gonna appoint people to the Board of Freeholders in ten days, appoint some people to the economic development and these other boards in ten days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McQuillan. That concludes public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 268, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance amending Chapter 612, Title VI, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, airfully controlled by repealing and reenacting Section 612.030, and by adding and enacting two new sections to be known as Sections 612.263 and 612.345 pertaining respectively to inspection fees and open burning regulations. Bill number 269, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Christian Health Services Development Corporation for sale of an approximately 6.8-acre parcel of property for construction of a new first precinct police station. Bill number 270, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 27,476 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a contract with Professional Environmental Engineers, Inc., for on-call environmental consulting services. Bill number 271, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a license agreement with the United States Census Bureau to allow for St. Louis County to use the Bureau's logo on external communications and other publications pertaining to the county's Complete Count Committee. Bill number 272, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 25,499 by repealing and reenacting Section 3 pertaining to PC 17-13 Angels Arms. Bill number 273, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance amending Chapter 1003, Title 10, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, zoning ordinance by repealing and reenacting Section 1003.020 pertaining to definitions, PC 26-19, St. Louis County Planning Commission. Bill number 274, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance amending Chapter 1003, Title 10, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, zoning ordinance by repealing and reenacting Sections 1003.123 and 1003.125 pertaining to regulations for the R7 and R8 residence districts, PC 26-19, St. Louis County Planning Commission. Bill number 275, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance approving the application and preliminary plans for the amended development in the C8 Planned Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions, and repealing Ordinance Number 7,011, PC 22-19, Wendell Bryant. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all the bills.
Very well, thank you. Proceed with perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold on the order of business. So ordered. Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 260, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect Bill number 260. Second. Fall in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 260 is perfected.
Bill number 261, introduced by Councilmembers Days, Walton Gray, and Dunaway.
Move to perfect Bill number 261. Second.
Fall in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 261 is perfected.
Bill number 262, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect Bill number 262. Second. Fall in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 262 is perfected.
Bill number 263, introduced by Councilmember Trakis. Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 263, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, an ordinance amending Chapter 107, Title 1, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974, as amended, purchasing by adding and enacting two new sections pertaining to St. Louis County's cone of silence policy.
Thank you. I move for adoption of substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 264.
63, so 63.
I'm sorry, 263. I apologize.
I just have one comment. Can I have a comment first?
Proceed.
I have some questions after Mr. Davis spoke regarding that substitute bill. I wonder if that's something, I don't know if that's the first we've heard of those comments from him or from any of that organization, if that's something we want to look at before we move too much faster.
My intention is to adopt the subbill, hold it, so that Mr. Davis and his organization will have an opportunity to review it. If he has any issues, he can come back and address us with regard to those issues.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory?
Yes.
I renew my motion to adopt Sub Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 263.
A second.
Fall in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 264 is perfected. We'll hold it on the order of business.
Bill Number 263 is held.
And that'll be the order.
Bill Number 264, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Please hold on the order of business, and Bill Number 264 will be held.
Bill Number 265, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 265. Sergeant.
Fall in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 265 is perfected.
Bill Number 266, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move to perfect Bill Number 266. Second. Fall in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 266 is perfected.
Bill Number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Harder.
Please hold.
Very well. Bill 267 is held. Final passage.
Bill Number 254, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Please drop from the agenda, and that'll be your order.
Bill Number 257, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 257. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 257, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 257 is finally passed.
Bill Number 258, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 258. Second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 258, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 258 is finally passed.
Bill Number 259, introduced by Councilmember Trakis.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 259. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill 259, there are six ayes and one absent.
Very well. Bill Number 259 is finally passed.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no resolutions this evening.
Very well. Let's proceed with unfinished business.
Your unfinished business, item number 1, 3rd District.
Please hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item number 2, 4th District.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Item number 3, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the new liquor license be approved as requested. Second. Fall in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have two prepared orders to save.
I move for the adoption of Order Number 1 and Order Number 2.
Second.
Fall in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Orders Number 1 and 2 are adopted. Any further discussion, comments? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.